Anybody who wants to speak tonight, we'd like you to fill out a comment card. There are comment cards in the back and there are pencils and pens and stuff. If you forget, somebody up front here will give you one, okay? And now, we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Would everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? That's the Slacka.
Thank you, Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Here.
Councilman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Slacka.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilman Simmons.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Longcart. Here. Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor.
That was pretty weak, but, okay, it's a budget meeting, so that's all right. We are here for our budget meeting. This is the second, right? Second budget meeting in the process? And, let's see, this time we'll take public comment on the budget. Anyone wishing to speak this time, please come forward.
All right. Yeah, Rick Steinmeier. And if ever there was a time to call on Almighty God to bless us and to guide us and give us wisdom from above, it's tonight. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good evening. For the record, Nicole Johnson, here on behalf of the Conservancy of Southwest Florida. And I just wanted to thank you particularly for two items that are in your draft budget. And I don't want to call attention to them and make you think about removing them, but I want to thank you that they're there. The first one is under the capital improvement projects. It's a new project underwater quality. And it's $200,000 for water quality projects, including land acquisition from willing sellers out in the DRGR area. That is going to be so, so important. You have no idea how many small lot owners out there that have property literally underwater that really don't know what to do with that land. With this money in hand, the city will be able to go out and hopefully start acquiring those smaller parcels that can then help with fixing that larger DRGR water picture. So, thank you for that. And also, the $95,000 that is going to the DRGR groundwater monitoring. We're really, really excited to get that going. So, thank you, thank you, thank you for putting your money where your mouth is and moving forward with these very important water quantity/quality restoration issues in the DRGR. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Fred Forbes, for the record. Just want to kind of go back to something I said at the last city council meeting. I would urge city council to seriously consider taking any of the projects that are currently in the budget, especially in the capital improvement area, and just sliding them out one fiscal year doesn't mean you're gonna do it. It allows you time to find out really better what Old Forty-One renovation and redevelopment's gonna cost, which is a great project. And it'll give you a time for planning, prioritization, all that. Doesn't mean that any of those projects would not be done. Now, that would also apply to, there's a couple things that are not specifically called out in the budget, but they're in the budget as a kind of a cash cow place, which is like unpaved roads. There's no reason that those can't be slid one year, rather than bring in people with proposals this coming year. This year should be, hold on to what you have so that if you do need it for emergencies, Old Forty-One or whatever, you've got those funds. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Just grab that microphone, pull it down right in front of you. There you go. Right in front of your mouth. Further.
Hi, my name is Samuel Christopher Wells.
Thanks, Samuel.
I've been skating at the Benita Springs Skate Park for about a year now. And, um, I know there's like a lot of money to like fix it, because it's been like eroding under and stuff like that. And, um, I was just saying, maybe if you switched it to cement skate park, it would not erode as fast.
All right, cool. Anything else?
Uh, no, sir. Thank you for your time.
It's all right. Thanks. Thanks for coming. Good job.
Hello, my name is Tyler John Lambert. We would not want you to take the skate park down, because a lot of people go. And we also need it for sports club, because that's the only reason why I go to sports club, is the skate park. And we would like to have some renovations and make it a little bigger. It's my, one of my favorite sports, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, babe. Oh, here's another little guy. Hey, buddy.
Can I put it up now?
Oh.
I hate to follow these guys that are future leaders of the world, so it's hard to follow acts like that. For the record, Greg DeWitt, District Two. I've come to speak in favor of the budget. I think you guys have done a fine job in looking at the budget and seeing what the capital projects are. And just to remind you guys that I did, I too did come with a request a couple, about a month ago, and you guys did approve it, so I'd like it to stay in the budget also, with the wall on East Terry. It's for our neighborhood. Like I said, I brought in petitions for everybody. I know there was some discussion whether vegetation or concrete wall. The people want the concrete-style wall, and I think it will enhance the area, and it also will help out for future projects along there, whether that road needs to get an updated sidewalk. I just think it's a better fit. And that's what we've done all over the city already, whether it's Piva Court, whether it's Lost Wood Circle, whether it's down along the Preserve. It's what we've, what we've always been doing, so. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, good afternoon.
Hello.
My name is Drew Gonzalez. I'm a skater of ten years, and I would not like to see the skate park torn down, just period. I'm here on behalf of a community, and I say "community" because that's what we are. We're a community and a culture of people that are diverse, and we do not discriminate against race, color, age, anything like that. And when you tear down a skate park, especially a place where young children are going and are developing, you know, most people believe that skateboarders are a community of, you know, vandalizers and people of low mentality. Well, what I see is a community of people of diversity, intelligence, and persistence. These are kids that could grow up to, you know, become professionals of their sport and what they do. They, you know, don't lack things that you would normally think that a skateboarder would. They are very intelligent and persistent in exactly what they do. It takes hard work to do what we do, and having a skateboard park is a place where kids can go and skateboard and just do what they love to do, instead of being out on the streets vandalizing other people's properties, such as local parks and community buildings and things like that. So, when you guys tear something down like this, and even if you are gonna be rebuilding it, that's months or maybe even years that kids are gonna, you know, not have a place to go. And then what? Kids are gonna be out on the streets. It's not, it's not right, in my opinion. And I understand that money is definitely an issue, and, but I believe that you're taking away kids' dreams of, you know, what they really want to do. They work hard. I mean, some kids just go to an event and they'll get a backpack, and that's great. They'll get 50 bucks at an event, and that's great. They love to do these things. And that's all I really have to say about it. Thank you.
Well done, Drew. Thanks. Come on up, bud.
Hi, my name's Mikey Marquetti. I am a fellow Eagle Scout and also a skateboarder of ten years.
Hmm.
Thank you. So, my concern about, I know, the budget of what we could do, possibly to our skate park, because we have a plaque to commemorate of what we did as a city for us to have a skate park at the skate park. And when I think about taking a skate park away like that, I think about that plaque, because it's permanently there and you can't do anything with it. I mean, yeah, you can remove it, but it's not like the original spot. It's not original. It's not where it came from. And the budget, to me, as long as we have someplace to skate that is safe environment for us, I am very grateful for that. Because some of the, my concerns are, they have a free Lehigh skate park, but that skate park up there is very low-quality, and there is a lot of gang-related activity that goes around there. And that's my concern about having a free skate park, that it could turn into that. Thank you.
Good deal. Thanks.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jake Romer. I just want to say, skateboarding saves lives. I am proof of that. I have seen multiple people grow up in a lot of bad areas where they should've probably gotten into some bad trouble, but didn't, instead, came across someone with, "Oh, what's that plank of wood with wheels?" "Oh, wha- wha- what?" Start running it. Start forgetting about all this ghetto mentality and destructive behavior. Even though, to a minor degree, skateboarding is destructive, it's much less than, of course, gang violence and things of that nature. And it, it takes up so much time and energy that you don't even think about it. And it really, I've seen so many times, it positively affects children. And not just with that, but there's a lot of life lessons that I feel has been taught to not only me, but many, many skaters that I've come across in life. One of the most important, in my opinion, is the trial and error. You see a lot of people, I see, they try something, they mess up. "Oh, I can't do that." Skateboarding, it's trial and error, trial and error. And, and it teaches kids, you really try it, yeah, you'll mess up. You'll mess up maybe once, maybe a thousand times. Try it again, maybe you'll do it. And then, that consistency and that development kind of thing, like, I completely forgot everything else I had to say. Thank you for your time.
That's all right. Trust me, don't give up on that trial and error, because you're gonna keep doing it, just like us. Anyway, hi.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Spencer. Been a Benita resident since 98. My son attends the skate park and has for the last year. We just renewed his membership, so I'm here to support keeping the skate park. I don't know what the membership count is. I know there was reference in an article to, there used to be 100 kids a day, and now there's 25. Shouldn't matter how many kids show up. The membership is $20 a year. Little League is $100 for four months. Why not raise the membership fee? That could go towards the cost of helping rebuild the park. If you replace the park with a playground, I doubt you're gonna charge the families to use the playground. Playground dwellers are 1 to 6-years-old. Skate park, 5-years-old, 50-years-old. My son has a membership. My husband has a membership. Sports club, as one of the children said, that's the main reason a lot of kids go to sport club, is because they love to go to the skate park. Hours of operation, summer hours are still 4 o'clock, Monday through Friday. We should open at 10:00 a.m. Saturdays, we should open at 10:00 a.m. What does it do in Southwest Florida in the summer? It rains. We can't go to the skate park during the summer, because it's closed, because it's filled with water, or there's lightning strikes. Replacing the free skate park without maybe monitoring, no one's gonna kick the kids off the skate park if it is lightning, riffraff. They do a good job of kicking kids out if they're using bad language or bullying. The older, more experienced kids mentor the younger kids. My son has been welcomed there, instead of feeling like, "Oh, I don't know what I'm doing. These older kids are gonna make fun of me, and I'm not gonna go anymore." And Naples replaced their wooden skate park years ago with concrete, because it makes sense in Southwest Florida if you're outside to have concrete. And I don't know if you've heard of Team Pain, but that is a skate park company that works with municipalities to build and design skate parks. So, I'm gonna send you their information, and if we need help in designing and maybe financing a skate park, that would be a good place to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. See, we usually don't applaud, allow applause in there, but this is a budget meeting. I'm not used to there being anyone here. So, it's kind of nice. So, I'm like, "Okay, all right." Hi.
I'm Julie Marquetti, and I'm here for the skate park as well today. My son has been skating at the skate park. He was the Eagle Scout. He's been skating there for about nine years, I think. And I can tell you, I can agree with what this parent just said and with what some of these kids have said. A lot of people have negative impression of skateboarders, and as a parent, I've seen nothing but positive behavior from the skateboarders I've been around. I've never seen a skateboarder using drugs, having alcohol, and I've been to a lot of skate park events, skate park areas. And these are really good kids that have a lot of energy. Some of them have maybe ADHD and some other things going on in their lives, and they really take that energy and turn it into something positive and turn, turn it into a really good I think the investment is worth it, not only for the kids, but as a community. I know when we've gone on vacation before, we'll look up places, we'll look up skate parks. Where can we go? Where we can have? We have a kid who's a skateboarder. We have four children. We want to make sure that our kids have opportunity to do things that they like. There are skate parks that have metal ramps. I know that was one of the options, is to downgrade to metal ramps. We've been to Everglade City. They have a very small skate park. It's probably the size of your area here. It's fenced in, and they have metal ramps. It doesn't draw a lot of people to it, and we were there, and the attention span of our child was very short. Sanibel similar, and they have it stuck out in the back behind their community center. We had to search long and hard to find it. And again, it was even smaller than this area with just a few ramps. And so, if you downgrade it and you don't keep the skate park interesting, you're gonna lose the kids, and it'll still be a waste of money. I think that a concrete skate park makes a ton of sense. Putting wood in Florida is just not practical. I agree with either the 24-hour, seven-day concept of a park. And I brought a picture of something that I found on the internet. There's a lot of beautiful streetscapes that turn skate parks into areas that everybody can enjoy, because adults enjoy watching kids do the tricks and things like that. So, if you take it away from the rec center, that would be one of the recommendations I have, is to look into something that would be quality, that when you invest the money in it, it's not just for the children, but the entire community can use it. I agree with this other parent, that when you have the hours, they open at 1 o'clock in the afternoon. My kids would love to be there earlier in the daytime and use it, especially on the weekends, much earlier. If you had a 24/7 park, it wouldn't be an issue. If you put the park in a place, like I know I suggested back on Depot Park, on the backside, where it's kind of out of the way, as a parent, I would be concerned, because it's an area where there's not, not a lot of visibility, and I think it would be a magnet for kids that are not skating, but for drugs and alcohol use and things like that. I think having it in a wide-open space is very important. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Anderson, and I agree with what the parents have also said. The skate park, the kids love it, and they spend hours there. And I agree, it should be open earlier. Sarasota has a great 30,000-feet concrete skate park. And they also have what the last parent mentioned about the street skating park, where it's built into the city, the cityscape. So, maybe we could form a committee where the parents who are interested can work with the skaters to find a plan that works best for everyone. We would be happy to do that. And I did want to bring up, too, that the skateboarding kids, they formed a community skateboarding page on Facebook to save the skate park, and they have 115 people who like the page. And we also started a petition, and we have 42 people that signed it. So, there is quite a bit of interest in the city and the community to keep it. And that's even without much advertising. The, where the skate park is now, a lot of people don't know about it unless they drive back there or live in Benita. The one in Naples is very visible from the road, so it gets more attention, you know, so maybe some type of marketing could be done to promote it.
What's the name of the page? Do you know?
Save B3. So, it's, I emailed it to you.
Save B3?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
My name's Andrew McFarland, and I've been skating for 10 years. I moved down in 2005. I think the park opened in 2004. You know, I think they touched everything, you know, really, the parents. But I, you know, as a personal example, you know, we get a bad rap, you know, I think it's pretty clear. But that place was my home away from home. You know, like when I had nowhere to go, that was the place that took me in. Like, again, older kids mentored me, and now I feel like I'm one of those kids. So, I feel fortunate enough to, you know, to give those kids someone to look up to and ask questions and help out. And, again, for the bad rap, you know, like I said, I've been going there for 10 years, and, you know, a month ago, I just graduated from university at Florida State with a degree. So, there's really, you know, it's not too much of a bad rap, if I can do that, so. Thank you.
Well done. Thanks. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Hi, Doug Kenny, here to speak regarding the skate park as well. The other parents, I think, have pretty much hit everything except for a couple of items. One of the concerns I had, that if you did remove that skate park, would be, and put one as a standalone location, would be that that would probably invite, you know, problem people and, you know, a negative element. The other thing that really concerns me about that, and I know it's a big concern with the council, is, and the rec department, is the emergency services. You know, skateboarding is a, isn't a pretty hardcore activity, and there's a risk of injury. If you have a standalone location without any adults around and just children, the other children may not recognize that there's a serious injury that's occurred, and it might really reduce the response time that could be critical in, in helping one of these kids who may be injured. You know, I realize that the staff at the skate park, they may not be able to administer help, but at least they could recognize that there's a problem that requires immediate attention. So, it's important to have that supervision. If you did put another standalone location, all you're doing really is, and this is a budget meeting, is you're creating an additional space that's gonna have additional budget requirements. You know, just removing the skate park is not gonna remove the budget requirement. So, it might reduce it and shift it around, but there is still going to be additional budget requirements. One of the big things that I think is really important about the park, and we really have had firsthand experience with this, is having the kids there and having some supervision helps them understand that there's discipline and that there's consequences for your actions. If there's a standalone park with no supervision, kids can do whatever they want with, you know, no consequences and, and not learn really what's important as far as being good steward of your community and becoming a good citizen. Most of these kids that are skating are at an age where they're very impressionable, and we really want to help them become good citizens and hopefully future leaders of our community. And having the supervision at the skate park, I think, and having them realize that there's consequences for their actions if they don't behave or don't act the way they're supposed to, you know, that's a negative. One other positive, I think, of having the skate park at the rec center is you're drawing more people to the rec center. You know, the rec center doesn't just have the skate park, it has other programs and activities that, you know, are, as far as I can tell, are not that well-attended, but I think the more people you have and the more activity you have coming to the rec center, the more people, you know, it might be slow, but the more people will become involved and see what other activities the, the community has and the rec center has. So, hopefully, you guys will, I know, I know there's been a couple of suggestions as to what to do with the space, but hopefully you guys will determine to keep it there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come on up.
Hello, I'm Alex. I grew up skating at Benita Skate Park.
All right.
So, for 10 years now, I've been skating there. I met all my friends there. I've like, like, I really love that place. It'd be sad to see it go. But if it does, if it does go, those Team Pain parks, concrete parks, they're very popular everywhere in Florida now. They're all over the place. They're in Zephyr Hills, Lakeland, Bradenton. Tampa has like three. But, yeah, it would be, those Team Pain parks, the way to go.
Good. Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Anything on the budget? Okay. All right, everybody, thank you very much. It's, it's nice to get some positive input like that. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. All right, Carl, what do you got for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Tonight, we are here to go through our first public hearing for the budget. Staff has been working diligently since your budget workshop to make the changes in the budget that the council directed at that time. Also, made some changes of our own in order to correct some errors or to more accurately reflect numbers that we received after the workshop. Tonight, we'd like to start off with a presentation of the changes that have been made, and we're gonna ask Ann Wright, our finance director, to do that. Ann?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The changes are summarized within the book. The book has been completely updated since the July meeting, so it reflects where we currently are today. If you would like to follow along, starting on page one, behind the table of contents within the book, is a memo that summarizes the changes that have been made to the proposed budget since the July 23rd budget meeting. First section deals with the items that were discussed at that budget meeting, and first item was a decrease of the budget, the general fund budget of $25,000 for economic development incentives to offset an increase that had been presented in that draft budget for downtown redevelopment incentives. So, that change has been made. Increased the budget of $5,000 for Benita Building Blocks and the Neighborhood Services Cost Center, and we did update that cost center to use that new name, and decreased the contingency budget in the non-departmental cost center. Third change was to increase the capital budget from, by $55,000 for the playground at the dog park. And to fund this playground, $40,000 was moved from the Community Development Block Grant Projects Budget and the Road Capital Projects Fund, and a $15,000 transfer from the Community Park Impact Fees Fund to fund this. And the fourth item that was discussed during the budget meeting was to add funding in the fiscal year 2016, 2017 year, so not the upcoming budget, but the following year, in our capital improvement plan, by $110,000 for beach re-nourishment, which was inadvertently admitted on that July 23rd draft. So, that's been included in this document. Other items that did come to the staff's attention and situations that occurred since that July 23rd meeting were also addressed in this, in this draft. First item being increasing the lobbying services in the city council cost center by $5,000, and that was to provide a budget for the negotiated service contract for our lobbyists, bringing that budget to $60,000. Next item is to increase the budget of Ms. Lane's Consulting Services and the City Manager Cost Center by $34,000 for the cost of the Community Rating Services Study. It was originally expected to be completed during this current fiscal year, and it's been delayed by the vendor until next fiscal year, FY 15, 16. So, that needed to be incorporated into this budget document, and it was basically resulted in a decrease of the contingency account by 34,000, to move money from contingency for that line item. Next item is an increase in the budget by $150,000 for demolition costs relating to the downtown property. This cost estimate of 150,000 is actually $100,000 less than what was originally anticipated that the, this service would cost back when the current year's budget was being prepared. It is anticipated that the demolition, it could, could be completed in FY 2015, 16. Originally, we thought it would occur in this current fiscal year, but since that time, it was realized with the various permits that are required and other matters that need to be addressed, that it wasn't going to be completed during this current fiscal year. And you may recall that in August, there was a budget amendment to, to provide that funding in this current fiscal year. So, that is now being incorporated into the FY 15, 16 request. It will be funded by using the beginning fund balance, which, since we're not gonna have that cost in this current fiscal year, that, that expense won't affect the fund balance, and we'll be there next year to fund it. Another adjustment was to decrease the budget by $10,000 for the Community Development Block Grant-funded projects. And this is based on updated information that we did receive from Lee County regarding the available funding to, to the city for the upcoming year. Next item does create a large increase to this current, this upcoming budget request, but it was always a part of our capital improvement plan. We've received new information now regarding the timing of cash requirements for the downtown redevelopment project. Wright Construction has been able to project for us, based on their plan of activity, when we will be required to actually make payments to them for that project. In light of that information, we are, have in this budget moved funding that previously was showing in later years up to the FY 2015, 16 year. The bulk of this funding is from the loan proceeds, so the, the money is in the city bank account right now. It's just shifting the timing of when that expenditure will, will actually occur, and we want to make sure that we have a budget in place to. we want to make sure that we have a budget in place to be able to incur that expenditure. So we have shifted $4,250,000 from the FY 2016, 17 year, which is where it was presented in the last draft that you saw. We're pushing that into the FY 2015, 16 year. And again, that's the loan proceeds and the money is in the bank. Additionally, due to the timing of when we are anticipating cash payments, the $1.5 million of road impact fees that was shown in the previous draft as being in the FY 16, 17 year is also moved to the 15, 16 year. So both of those items, just shifting from one column in that capital improvement plan to, to the FY 15, 16 year. And then a little minor adjustment of $93 on a bank service charge. Next item is to properly reflect within our budget document a state refund of $200,000 that is going to be received in FY 2015, 16 as a reimbursement of costs that had previously been incurred by the general fund. And this transfer is showing that we're adding a $200,000 from, transfer from the Grants Fund, which is where that state funding will be recorded when it's received, that the Grants Fund will transfer the money to the general fund to reimburse the general fund, which was the source of funding this expenditure. And then we will delete the transfer that previously was shown in the last draft from the Grants Fund to the other capital projects fund. So instead of the money going from the Grants Fund to the other capital projects fund, it's going back to the general fund to reimburse the general fund. And then to add the transfer of 200,000 from the general fund to the downtown redevelopment project in the other capital projects fund, and this was previously approved by council. Next item is to move the $200,000 budget for the land acquisition relating to water quality, which was previously shown in the road capital project fund in the previous draft, to reflect it in the other capital projects fund, where it's more appropriate, appropriately shown. And next item is an increase in the proposed budget for technology enhancement expenditures within the building permit fees fund, and this is a large amount, $650,000. The Community Development Department is in preliminary stage of planning for these enhancements, and it includes digitizing plan documents, upgrading equipment, and expanding the GIS capabilities to link data from various sources to, to locations. The building fund is, building permit fees fund is a separate special revenue fund. The use of the funds are restricted to expenditures that relate to assuring compliance with the state building code, and they do have a fund balance that more than covers this amount. Next item is to adjust the budget by $19,600 for interest expense to be paid by the general fund to the road impact fee fund and to reduce the contingency account to cover for that fund. And this relates to the inter-fund transfer that took place between the road impact fee fund to the general fund relating to a loan that was made to the Benita Wander Gardens. Next item is some information to make you aware of relating to the capital improvement project summary. On page 140, debt service amortization was added to that page. That's basically just an addition of information provided on that page. We added funding in years six to 10, so the, the latter years, in the fiscal year, relating to fiscal year 2020 to 21 through FY 2000, or 2024 to 2025. We added funding for implementation of Stormwater Master Plan, old 41 four-laning Benita Beach Road to Collier County, residential sidewalk drainage and asphalt overlays. And those were projects that really are either projects ongoing or anticipated to occur and had previously been shown in our 10-year plan, and, and those dollars were added. There is one more item that didn't make it to the book. It came to our attention after this book was published, and I would like to communicate that as a change that will occur the next time you see this document. Relates to a, a budget amendment that, that was approved on August 19th. That budget amendment included a $100,000 transfer from the Road Capital Projects Fund in the unpaid roads project, $100,000 from that project over to the other capital projects fund for the downtown project. Our city charter allows for us to transfer funding from one department to another department as long as there's available budget, and that was the case in this situation. However, Florida statutes say that a, a transfer is allowed, but it cannot cause your total fund to increase its appropriation in total. And that one transfer that was between one capital project to another capital project actually crossed over two separate funds, because we have a separate fund for the road capital projects and a separate fund for the other capital projects. So the next council meeting, there will be an amendment to that resolution to remove that transfer from, to amend the, the previous resolution to remove that $100,000 transfer. So this book will be updated for that, because we had already incorporated that amendment in this book. But the other thing that we will update in this book is we need to then add $100,000 to the funding for the downtown redevelopment, and we will be adding that into the FY 16, 17 column, coming from the general fund.
Okay, are you going to have to do that by resolution the next meeting?
The next council meeting.
Next council meeting, okay.
It's on, on the 16th of September.
Anything else?
Just following up on those changes, the pages that follow, page four is a worksheet, because accountants like to have numbers on worksheets, and that does show, it starts at the top, showing the total revenues, total expenditures, transfers in and transfers out, that pre showed on the previous draft, the July draft, and the various changes that were just discussed to get us to the totals that appear on this draft. And if you really enjoy that, you might want to spend some time on the two pages that follow that go into all the details. So this gets down to the line item, line item, which we basically need to have in order for us to record transactions within our system. So it goes from summary, which we just went over, to a detailed summary spreadsheet to the real detail, and I won't go over that in detail unless you have questions.
Okay. Any questions for Ann regarding these changes to the budget that they've been since the last time around? Any questions or comments? Just as it regards to this, okay? Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carl? Well, at this time, we'd like to just turn it over to council to see if you have any further questions or changes, because it is the discussion of the revised budget time in this meeting.
Okay.
Again, council has heard twice now from a resident regarding the whole issue of the CIP and certain projects in there, and whether or not we should do them or not this year or provide some planning time for those things, more of a comprehensive look at how we provide especially parks and recreation facilities and programs, and whether we need to be doing all of those or if we can spread those around to other agencies within the city, and of course, whatever council wants to do on that, staff is prepared to do as well. I will say, should council decide they want to proceed with that, I, I don't believe that we can just hold all of the capital projects back as they regard to parks and recreation in particular. There are some serious maintenance items that need to be resolved in this coming fiscal year, and, and those things would need to go forward regardless, in our opinion. So with that, Mr. Mayor, turn it over to you.
Okay. Council, how would you like to do this? Hopefully you don't want to go page by page. That's my least favorite thing in the world.
Line by line would be good.
Yeah, line by line.
Better still.
Letter by letter.
I hate that even more. Or, or we can just go one person at a time there and kind of go through those people's, what they want to do, or what would you like to do?
Before we start, could we hear from Nicole about the skate park?
Oh, sure. Do you want to kind of concentrate on capital improvement projects to start with?
Well, I know some people here are waiting to see what's going on with skate parks.
Nicole, could you come up? We've got some questions for you. Maybe just, maybe to start it off, Mike, what, what were you, what was your original plan regarding the skate park and what are your thoughts on that?
Okay. What I originally came to you at the last budget hearing was to let you know that we do have a maintenance issue at the current skate park. The wood that is underneath the ramps is rotting away. We have a lifespan of about three to four months pushing it. So that cost would be $60,000 to fix, and that would keep it exactly.
Fifteen, did you say?
Sixty.
Sixty thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that would keep it exactly how it is currently, right now. No changes to the way it looks. People would come in, it looks the same, it would just be structurally sound. In doing that, we had, it was also brought up to look at other locations possibly, making it smaller scale, making it metal or concrete, different options that we came up with. So what I did was, I did quite a bit of research. I was actually at the Florida Parks and Recreation Conference in Orlando, and I met with different companies, ones that built concrete, ones that built metal, ones that built wood. So I've met with all three to figure out where we can go from here. So looking at smaller scale, which was what I was looking at, which is around 3,200 square feet.
And what, and what do you have there now?
20,000 square feet.
We have 20,000 square feet.
Mm-hmm. So looking at smaller scale in another location, metal was about $30,000 in that square-footage range. Concrete was about $60,000 in that size range. To put, to tear down our current skate park and build a new one at 20,000 square feet using concrete, it would be over $500,000 to do. So that's a little something to think about. To do our current skate park with metal underneath would be about $150,000. So those are the different costs that we have. We also have, if we moved it into a different location and smaller scale, just because really we don't have 20,000 square feet somewhere else in another park to, to do, there were options as to what to do with a current location skate park. One was a covered playground that would be covered by CDBG grant funding, so it wouldn't come from general fund or park impact fees. But it could, I mean, it could, but it's currently, we believe, eligible for CDBG. And it would put the existing playground that's at Community Park, which is in dire need of replacement and has its own maintenance issues, we would move it to the location next to the rec center. That way, with smaller children, they do have a little more difficulty going that far to the restroom and things like that, so it would hook them to the rec center, and they could come and go a lot easier to do some of those sort of issues. Another option that we looked at was adding tennis/pickleball courts, because we do have a lot of people that use pickleball in our area, and it's easier to build a tennis court and then put both markings, because they're basically the same size, just the markings are a little bit different. So that was also an option to put in that area. That also could be covered under CDBG funding or park impact fees. And another option that we discussed last meeting was kind of rearranging the park a little bit. If we did move the skate park in a different location, move the playground at the skate park, we could build pickleball tennis courts where the current playground is, which is right next to the current tennis courts. And that all could be done with CDBG funding. So those are kind of all the options. There are a lot of them out there, and it's really, we're looking at you to figure out funding-wise, what you would like us to do. Keep it the same, it's 60,000, there are all these different options.
Now, have you, have you budgeted anything as of yet in this budget?
Currently, the only thing budgeted is the 175,000 for the playground, because even in its current location, I need to replace it, and that's under CDBG funding.
And the playground that's near the rec center?
Right.
Okay. Okay, council. Mike, or did you want to start, Mike? He started out.
Can CDBG money be used on the skate park at all?
It, it depends. If we move it to a different location, it would depend on the eligible area. There's a map, and it has different areas that you have to fall into for it to be eligible.
How big of an area is where the playground is now?
The current playground area, square footage rise is not 20,000 square feet. It's probably about the 3,200 square feet.
So we couldn't just swap the two?
Um, not size for size.
Well, we're, we're looking at really losing the skate park in three to four months if we don't fix what's there now.
If, currently, if you do nothing, the skate park will close in three to four months.
Okay. So the repairing of the wood underneath, if we went metal, that would be 150,000?
If you built it the exact same.
Exactly what we have now.
Roughly.
Just with metal underneath. Now, would the decking still be, would that be metal or is that?
No, it would still be wood, and the reason for that is there are all metal skate parks, but being in Florida, that's not conducive for us.
It gets very hot, yeah.
It's too hot. Too hot, it would, it would burn people, and we would have issues with that. So what we looked at was more of a hybrid with the metal underneath and still the wooden ramps.
Okay, and so the concrete would be 500,000 for, to redo with the skate park that we have now, but all in concrete?
For 20,000 square feet.
And that, that's rebuilding exactly how it is, or?
No, because the, the concretes are different. Yeah, concrete is a different design than a normal ramped skate park. And what a lot of them actually heard from the public is they do more of a landscaped concrete design now. Team Payne does, there are lots of other companies that do, that I have met with, and they're all going with the more, it looks like a landscaped park, so it doesn't look like your traditional concrete skate parks.
What sizes do we need for that?
Size it, you can get whatever size you want, and then it's just different costs. It's about $60,000 per 2,500 square feet, approximately.
Has there been any locations that we've kind of honed in to move it to, or?
We've looked at different areas. We've looked out near the YMCA. Depot Park near the natural playground has been thrown around, but there aren't, we don't have a lot of locations, so that would, that's going to be something that we would have to really dig a little deeper into as to where we could put it. The landscaped makes it a, uh, concrete makes it a little easier, because then it would blend a little better than an actual big monstrosity skate park, but we are having a little difficulty.
If I might, we, I actually had a conversation with the YMCA executive director a couple of weeks ago, and actually proposed a partnership where the YMCA, if they were interested and had the room, that we would actually construct a new state skate park at their location. And to do so would allow us to have a new facility at the YMCA that would be better supervised than just putting the new facility out somewhere where there, there was no supervision nearby. And especially more important when you're talking about the possibility of needing to call for medics if, if one of the kids gets injured as they're doing the skateboarding. So we have not heard back from them on that possibility, but that's something we could certainly pursue if the council so desired. We just do not have additional city, city-owned property right now that we could place this in, that are actual parks.
Mike, if you could, tell us about the, the 60,000 you talked about. Was that to rebuild it completely with wood, or was that just the frame underneath?
It's just the frame underneath.
Reinforced the frame. In other words, this was just a repair?
It's a repair. It's a fix.
And didn't do anything to the, the surfaces? Are the surfaces okay?
Yes, because we maintain those every three months.
Well, not, not, they're going, they would know.
Yes, every three months, we bring in, we have a maintenance agreement with ramp doctors. He comes in and he replaces those.
So, so one option would be to do something to where a stopgap measure to, a 60,000, if you can call that, a stopgap measure. In other words, to buy us some time if, to decide whether we could find a place, because all these other options, Mike, sound like they're going to take time and a lot of money.
A con, a concrete one would, yes. A concrete would take time, money, design, all of those things. It would take a lot of time. The other, the metal, doesn't. It's kind of like a, a playground. You, you pick pieces and you install them. So that would be a, a quick turnaround per se, where we could put something in quickly and have enough time.
If you decided to do it in the same place, you could, if we decided to, to just repair in the same place, even if you did metal in the same place, metal frames, do, you could do that as well, right?
That, yes, we could. At, at 150,000.
Okay. Does somebody else want to talk about this? Let me, let me.
The most important, go ahead.
Go ahead, Bill.
The most important thing to me is the safety issue for the kids.
Sure.
Very, very important. And if the 150,000, Ben, that you just mentioned, is a way to keep everything moving in the same direction until we have all those other options that Carl just mentioned, I think that would be an appro- I think that would be an appropriate thing to do to, for the safety of the kids. And then we can think about the YMCA and all these other things down the road a little, a little later. I think that would make sense.
The actual, the sixty thousand dollars will get you to where you're currently at and make it safe, and would buy you a couple of years.
Oh, okay.
Well, it puts it back to the situation where we first built it.
Correct.
How long did that last?
Well, no, we've changed it several times, and we've had to put additional funds in since we built it.
So far as the framing and stuff like that?
Yes, so this would buy us two to three years.
So doing it the sixty thousand dollar work, two or three years?
Yep.
Okay.
And it would be safe.
Yep, and it'd be completely safe.
Janet, go ahead. I'll come back.
Well, we've heard all the positives from the, uh, audience tonight as to why it should be there. And I'm just curious if there are any negatives as to, I've heard that, about suspensions and language and things going on there. And then I guess our liability has changed as to how we as a, um, Parks and Recreation, so that would this then become something where the gates are open and they don't have to go through, um, staff to have to use the park? What's, I know, that's a whole loaded bunch of questions there, but if you could do your best.
I can answer the liability portion, and the state law did change this year, but it's made it where we have less liability. So the changes have been to the better. Uh, before, um, as a result of both the state law and as a result of our insurance company, we were under different requirements. For example, knee pads, we required knee pads, and it wasn't required at other, uh, locations, including other governments. And that was because our insurer required it. So from an insurance standpoint and a, I mean, you're always going to get sued when anything happens, but we're not made as a mama or a parent as a result of somebody going and using the skateboard park. So from a clinical standpoint of liability, it's not a problem. As to the actual occurrences of things there, I'll let Nicole respond.
Well, what also has changed with the, the Florida legislation is we no longer have to staff it. We don't have to do that, um, any longer. Um, so it is a possibility that you could open the gates and have them come and go. Because I know hours were talked about, things like that. You could open it, remove, I can't remove a big concrete wall. That would be pretty costly, but the gates, the fencing, we can, um, we, of course, couldn't charge then. It makes it a little more difficult, but we don't have to staff, and it could be open, um, our normal park hours, which are dawn to dusk.
That's, that's more an operational thing that-
Right, but that is something that was addressed, yeah.
If we're going to fix it, we're going to fix it, then we can go to that.
And I guess, and then Mike, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, then to, to answer your next question is, um, yes, we do have, um, language issues and, and issues with, um, some, uh, skaters and staff where we have had to, um, suspend, uh, different people, um, some multiple times, uh, for different issues that we have had. Um, most of it is due to, um, aggressive language to staff.
Wait till you get pickleballers out there.
I know, you never know, it can happen.
We really know how to do that stuff, because we've been doing it a long time.
Yeah, so, we have had, um, those issues quite often, yes.
And then my last and final would be that, you know, we've talked about how the children's playground needed attention. And I'm all for doing that, but the area that we've talked about moving it to would be where this is. There aren't, is it, there isn't a lot of shade there. And where our current playground is, there is some beautiful shade trees there, so that makes it so that it is a little bit more comfortable. So I'm, I'm back to that the playground might need to just stay-
Well, the hundred and seventy-five thousand is actually for a covered playground.
Okay.
So it would include covering.
The question as to whether it would include a shade structure.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, uh, count, go ahead, Pete.
I just kind of, I have more of a general question. Um, have we, I know you mentioned you had reached out to the YMCA. Have we looked at, um, in a broader scope, or have there been any other discussions? So we're not duplicating services that we have at the park and what the YMCA offers, or what the YMCA could offer, or what we're thinking of down in that park? You know, we, there's a lot of different options. But at the risk of hurrying tonight and making a decision?
Well, on, on the two things that we're discussing, which is the skate park and the playground, are both in, in maintenance issues. So we really can't put those off. We have to either shut them down entirely, or do something now. So it does need to, those are two that do need, um, attention now, because they're, they're running into maintenance problems.
I, I, right, and I would agree with the maintenance issues, and I think those are fine, but I'm just wondering in a broader picture, is what, you know, and this is a loaded question here, again, I apologize. With the possibility of the library moving downtown.
Sure.
With the possibility of potentially us taking that space, or working with that space, or working with the county on that space, and working with the YMCA, bigger and grander things, which I know take time. But I would hate to, uh, rush to a decision down there, knowing with the library, knowing that the YMCA, from what I've heard, wants to look at working together and having, um, some synergy and some things that we can do together. I would just hate to box ourselves in to any decisions, um,
Sure.
that, that are beyond maintenance at this time.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not exactly sure which projects you're talking about. We can discuss those, um, because some of them are maintenance issues we need to do. Um, we, we are going to duplicate services with the YMCA in that we're both recreational facilities. Um, we have a workout room, they have a workout room. Um, in terms of programming, we don't duplicate a lot of those, because we do kind of consider them, um, the children and family facility, and where, um, I have thirteen hundred members, and nine hundred of them are seniors. Um, so we do, at our recreation center itself, um, I would say cater to seniors. So, and we do work together. Currently, I'm working with Maribel on a, on a grant for, uh, water safety, and it gives preschoolers, uh, free swim lessons. So our pool and the YMCA pool will be offering this. Um, it's free for, for both locations, and it's a program we're doing together. So where possible, we do work together, um, as best we can. But, um, our facilities and what programmings we do are, are quite a bit different.
Counsel, this, this kind of sounds like a situ- situation where if, if we can, for, I know sixty thousand thou- dollars is still a lot of money, but it seems like to me that, that there is a, a need there, and there's a need to fix it. I re- I do not want to close it down. I kind of like where it is, mainly because when we first put it there, we had this, a really long discussion about, you know, there were some worries about that interplay between the seniors and, and, and our young skaters. But I like that interplay. I mean, it may be awkward at sometimes, but that mixture is good. Our young people and our older people need to be together. We really, we really do. That's how we learn from each other, and I think that there's some appreciation that comes with that. And these young men, they articulated it really well. It teaches people responsibility, both sets of people, responsibility. So if, if, I, I would be in favor of-
I think my son would agree with you on that.
Even if he didn't have to, right? But I think putting that sixty thousand dollars into it for right now, and allowing staff and the YMCA and for everybody to really put some thought into where that ultimate facility, whether it's concrete or whatever it is, let's put some really good thought into that, like Pete says. Then we have time.
I was going to say, and then, and then we go beyond the skate park.
Yeah.
Who knows what? A water park, a this, a that, uh, who knows, right?
Well, well, let's deal with the skate park issue right now, and, uh, but counsel, what do you think?
Uh, I would make a motion to move forward, if, unless, I'm sorry, both of you.
Make a motion to move forward on that.
Does a motion to move forward with the sixty thousand dollar repair?
Yep.
There's a second, and we'll deal with that first. Any other co- uh, comments, discussion? Good.
The only thing is, I, I just want to say that I think, Bill, you asked a very good question. Safety is a major factor. And this is something we have to take care of, and, 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 uh, Ricky, you said about looking at other options in the community. And I think this is going to give us plenty of time.
Ricky's me, by the way. That's a family nickname.
My son, my son is Eric, and I call him Ricky too, so.
Pete is Ricky. I keep calling you Pete, and you're probably like, what? Uh, okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta? Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longford? Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay. All right, uh, don't go anywhere. Are you getting more things?
Not done, the playground.
I know. Uh, and counsel, can, can we deal with the, uh, the other, uh, maintenance part, the playground, right now? Would you like to talk about that right now?
Yes. Um, the current playground at Community Park is in need of major repairs. It has lived its lifespan, so currently, when things break, we have to shut down that portion, because we can't replace it. So, uh, there is, uh, CDBG funding available to replace that in its current location. And, um, that's what we currently have in the budget.
Make that motion.
Okay, well, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Purpose of discussion, a second. Mike?
Uh, you've mentioned that the one seventy-five included a shade structure.
Yes.
If it's kept where it is now, do we need the shade structure?
Portions of it, yes, um, because the, only the back half of it is shaded, the front half is not. So it would help us put some extra shading on it. Um, that cost could be a little less, because I won't need the large portion if we're in a different section. Um, but that's the, the number I've been given so far.
We want to keep the trees if we can.
Yeah, I'm not removing the trees. It would be just to shade the portion that's not.
This is more likely to be a design build, maybe, project that you put out there, or have someone design it and then put it out for bid, or something like that?
Yeah.
And, yeah, and I think that we would all agree, we'd like to keep as much natural shade as possible.
Yeah.
When, when it's practical, and it doesn't, yeah, okay, so.
Yes.
But, uh, but yeah, good point. Uh, and shade, holy moly, we need shade.
Very much so.
I need shade.
It's a little warm.
All right, anyway, uh, can, can, we have a motion and a second?
And I guess I would just ask again, you know, with, with looking at, working with the YMCA, does this, is this a decision that needs to be made tonight?
It is a deci-
Or is it something we can put off for a few months after we've studied?
Well, it, the YMCA, we haven't approached them in terms of wanting to partner with us in building any playgrounds. Um, this one is a maintenance issue as well, so if we don't put any money, because it is a CDBG grant funding project, it's a little bit different.
Well, and I think I know what you're, you're getting at, but when it, when it comes to, to, uh, certain functions, when it comes to slide swings and a park here, and a little place over there, a little place over there, we're, we're always going to do that. We're, we're all, you know, we're YMCA, or no YMCA, whatever. The YMCA, when it comes to gymnasiums and swimming pools and, uh, exercise facilities, there are certain things that YMCA's do. I don't think they're going to want to get into the slide and little thing that you twirl around on, and, and these little pocket parks. They're not going to do that, and we're going to need those. If we're going to be a walkable community, there's a certain amount of that we're going to need forever and ever. And so this is just what this is.
Correct.
They're, they're not going to do that. I can pretty much guarantee you, they're not going to, we'll build it for you for free. No, they're not. So I, I, I would just imagine, so, but I think that when it comes to these other, other functions, that's the time that that conversation will come up, so.
Sure.
I would think.
Just, uh, quick, how much time do we have, uh, before, um, the playground goes?
I mean, we should have a, about six months, so that I can design and have a new one built. Um, it will be shut down for a short period of time, because one will be torn down while the other one is being put in. Um, but it's, because that one, I can't keep it open, since it's the same location.
Is it, is, so far as the functionality of it, though, it is getting in pretty, uh, shape where something could break and someone could get hurt?
Yep.
Probably, yeah.
It's fragile.
It's fairly fragile, okay.
Yes.
Uh, so we do have a motion and a second? And any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longford?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, um, let's see. Now, so far as, uh, uh, other, other things, uh, did you want to bring something else up? Uh, either buddy, anybody about the Parks and Rec budget, so far as the capital improvement projects?
Well, I, I think possibly looking at the, um, the children's, uh, water park.
Yes.
That might be something that we could put on hold, especially to help with the, the money situation on the skate park.
To get started, give us the backstory on that, and how it started.
Sure.
What we went through, where we're at in the process, and then, then that'll help some.
Sure, absolutely. And, and one thing to answer your question in terms of funding, um, that's park impact fees to do a fix. I cannot use park impact fees, so that wouldn't correlate with funding, um, for the skate park. Only if we built a new one would that help us out. Um, but in terms of where we came about, this was actually last year that was presented to you, um, to build the children's activity pool, because we didn't have one in our area. Currently, there are either big water parks, which Naples has, or Cape Coral, um, and then there are pools. Uh, communities have pools, um, Fort Myers Beach has a tiny, uh, water, uh, children's activity pool. But no one really had a children's activity pool for kids to go to. Um, the YMCA does have, uh, their pool does have some mushrooms and a zero entry, but they don't have the water playground feature. Um, so we were looking at what needs we have in the community, and the city itself. We don't offer a lot for children. Uh, we do have playgrounds, but we don't offer our, our recreation center other than the skate park and some programming. Kids can't come and, and work out in our workout room. Um, but we do offer basketball leagues and things like that, but it was more for smaller children that we were looking to offer. Um, so that's where, how, kind of how it came about, in terms of us, uh, offering in addition to our current pool. Our current pool does cater to adults. Uh, the shallow end is three feet, and there's no entry into it. It's straight three feet. So it's not conducive to children, really, at all. Um, we do swim lessons and things like that, but the majority, um, that use it are seniors that use our pool facility. So we were looking at adding something, a city facility amenity for, um, children using our park impact fees that we have from developers.
And you're using those two funds, regional impact fees and community park impact fees, is what you're using?
Yep.
Okay, uh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, well, I was just thinking, you know, along with what Peter's kind of getting at, where we can partner with the Y, I'm just thinking that's something we could partner more with them on. And, you know, it's not like the skate park where we're going to lose it, we already have it. It's something that we don't currently have, so we're not really losing it, we're just kind of postponing it.
Sure, and, and that is something you can do. We, we do have money that is being designed currently. Um, so you, you do have money into it already with, um, design work that we've done. Um, also, we've kind of vetted it out there to the community, so, um, people are expecting it to come. So it's really, um, of course, it is your decision. It is already approved in this year's budget. We were asking for additional funds in, in next year's budget to build a family restroom. Um, just because they're all, they are small children, that we felt it was more conducive to have a family restroom added on.
Okay, well, because I know we talked about other things like, uh, the lemon tree property, but-
Sure.
You know, you said there wasn't much money left over in the, uh, park impact fees.
Sure, correct.
So this would help keep some funds in that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, let's go, Janet? Uh, go ahead.
I guess my only comment would be is we voted on this already, and there's people waiting for this. And I think to take a step back and to hold off on it isn't fair to them that are waiting. Our kids are getting older. And, you know, they were looking forward to that, because it truly isn't a pool that's made for children. So this was very exciting for us to have this as another amenity for our community, so I would not be in favor of stopping any production on that. We need to move forward with it.
Yeah, yes.
I have a more general question. When we look at, and I'm, we're, everybody's looking at a lot of numbers here, and, um, the proposed budget as it is, what is that in total, and what, versus what our revenues are that we're taking in?
Um, the, the summaries are, um, on page, start on page eighteen of the budget book?
That's right where I'm looking.
Um, okay, so the total in the center, uh, shows the summary of all the revenues for the city. And there's a column that says requested budget fiscal year, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. So that's totals twenty-five million, eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. So that's the total revenue. Um, the total expenditures are shown up above of all the funds. And that, the total expenditures are thirty-five million, three forty-nine, five ninety, requested budget.
A difference of about ten million.
That's correct, but, um, part of that is being funded with a transfer from our, our, our loan proceeds. Because that's viewed as incoming revenue to help.
Yeah, if I might clarify, so that may look like it's bad, like we're overspending by ten million dollars. Um, but that ten million dollars is part of not only the downtown, but also capital improvement projects that we have proposed for next year. So, um, if that is a concern, we can obviously cut some projects back that, that makes sense, if, if that is a concern. But again, we don't expect for that kind of overspending appearance to occur every single year. We're just heavy on projects in this, in this year as well as next year.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a concern for me, for sure.
For park projects, though, including that one, it is solely park impact fees, so even if, that's all you can use it for. You can't use it for anything else. You can't transfer it to downtown, you can't transfer it to any other locations. So if it's not a park project, you can't use it. So it is funding that we are bringing in from developers developing, um, but all it can be used for is to expand our parks.
When I, when I, but just in general, like, uh, When, just in general, like philosophically, when you talk about us working with the YMCA and that kind of thing, I think that's great, and we should always have that coordination going on. And I've been bouncing around this idea for a long time with a lot of people about, why don't we have an e-ticket? Why don't we have a ticket to where you can actually buy from the city or from the YMCA, a ticket that allows you to be a member of both at a discounted rate from both? In other words, you're 70, you get a 30% discount off both if you join both, and that way we both have members, and you can go to either place. I think that that's what it's going to be, because when you look at where the location of the YMCA is, and you draw a circle around what their general area might be, and you look at where our rec center is, you probably, we always say we want to be a walkable community. We want to be this walkable community. We always talk the talk. You really need to have these places where people, kids can get on their bike and they can ride there, where families don't have to go a long ways and stuff like that. And I think we can both work together, but we're both going to have some similar, there's going to be some overlap. There's just bound to be. And will we need to coordinate better in the future? Absolutely. I look forward to that. And I think it's going to be possible to do something like that, because then when you do have to close the pool for repairs, guess where they can go? And they don't have to pay for anything else. They can go that way. So I like that idea in the future. That's going to take some work in to do that. I mean, a lot. I don't even know if it's possible, but it sounds like it's possible.
We have proposed that before.
Okay, but for this particular situation, I think we're pretty far down the line from the expectations, because I remember a similar group of mothers. You're not mothers, not a similar group of people coming in, except they were mothers with small children that came in, and they were like, "Look, don't build this down at the park, they're going to have mud, it's that." Build it next to the pool, so when I go to the pool, my kids have a place to go. They were as adamant as the people that are in here now, but they don't know that they don't know that this thing might get the rug pulled out from underneath it, or they would be here.
Oh, yeah.
So, anyway, I get what you're talking about, but I'm going to have to stick with Janet on this.
Yeah, and that's fine. Can I, seeing how obviously the sunshine lawn, we can't talk to each other, could I just do an informal poll, Ben?
Yeah.
If there's a $10 million difference in what we're proposing on spending versus what we're taking in, does that concern you, Bill?
It does concern me, but as explained by the staff, I'm comfortable with the, I'm encouraged by the amount of input that I've received from the staff. It's the first year I've ever seen that, but then again, the extenuating circumstances are the downtown. There's so many things on the plate for the next two years, the next 24 months, and I rely heavily on the expertise of the certified public accountant. And it's unusual to see this, but I know there are circumstances that we move forward under these circumstances, and I support the, what's, the downtown is everybody, and all the things we're doing is great. And we just have some circumstances with finances that show that she has to show it this way, you can't show it any other way. And, but I'm comfortable that we will get through this, and we will have the wherewithal to pay for it, and everybody wins.
Well, and Bill remembers what our budget looked like when we built Imperial. I mean, it was a similar situation. That looked like the end of the world. I mean, it really did, because we, and talk about unknowns. We were building a four-lane road over people's houses, and they weren't happy about it. So we didn't know what we were going to have to pay for them, we didn't know what curves to build in it.
All the land acquisitions.
All the land acquisition. Every one of them was an unknown. We made it through that.
Right.
Kinda. And it's a great road right now, so is it scary? But it comes under the heading, well, we kind of do for a living, I think. I mean, so I think, I understand what you're talking about, but I think it's more of a function, it's more of a paperwork function. And I think in the, at the end of the day, we're going to be fine.
I think, Peter, your point is well taken. I get that. However, it's something that we've never done before, except for Imperial, I believe. And it's something that'll work out, but it's going to take a 24-month period to see us through it. And, but it's a cost of doing business, I guess. We have to do things, and we have to get through it, and hopefully the seven of us will cooperate to make sure it does happen. Thank you.
I bet, and then, you know, staff always finds that flexibility in a budget when there's time. They always have for the last 16 years. They always have. When something comes up, something unknown comes up, Audrey finds an unhappy client somewhere, we always find the time, always find it. Not that it's your fault, but we always find the time, the position, the money to do it. I think that there is always that flexibility, but it's, point well taken. Yeah, Mike?
Well, it is unnerving, you know, $10 million more. That's like 40% more than what we take in. But that $10 million, is that being offset by the loan, the $13 million loan?
Yes, sir. On page 20, I think that summary at the top, the budget at a glance can help explain it. The far right-hand column shows net differences. Basically, we started the year, we have revenues, we have expenditures, transfers amongst funds. But the net differences shows the impact, and the big, large number is in the debt service fund, $9,224,757. And that's basically the result of, we did borrow money in February 2014, the cash has been sitting in the bank. And now we are transferring it over to the capital projects for the downtown project. And that doesn't, that doesn't show up as a revenue, that's a transfer from one fund to another fund.
Well, just change that, make it be a revenue. That's what I do.
And it is, it's the generally accepted accounting principles for governments requires us to handle that as a transfer. When we received the proceeds, it was an other financing source, now it's an other financing use, so it never shows up as revenue or expenditures. Yet when we spend the money for the intended purpose, it shows up as an expenditure.
See, Lee County would call that a new revenue source. Take that.
Increment funding?
Excellent, nicely done. Okay, yes.
Is there anything in the budget that we can cut to kind of close that gap some, just so it doesn't appear to be as bad?
Essential versus non-essential?
In my opinion, that is a council discussion and decision. Staff has presented the budget. The budget will become yours when you adopt it. If you are looking to close the gap and cut things, then we look forward to your direction on that.
And the, so the remaining $3 million on the loan, then, is that still in the fund, or did we use some of that already, too?
We have used some of the loan proceeds with the contract with Ray Construction so far. And then we still have, basically in the CIP, some was transferred this year, and this will bring into the budget the full amount by transferring in the $9,250,000 in the FY 15-16 year.
But how much is left on that original loan for next year, because we're still going to have some costs next year, too?
For the loan proceeds, the project is funded with other sources of funds other than loan proceeds.
Okay, so the $13 million is going to be expended this year?
It's planned to be by the end of fiscal year 15-16, that we will expend all the loan proceeds.
And what's the extra project cost that we're expecting for next year?
Two million for the year beyond 15-16, or for 15-16?
Yeah, for beyond 15-16.
16, 17-year, $2.5 million. And then we've spent, we're expecting to spend about $2.8 million this fiscal year.
So the GMP, again, is $18.6 million for the total project, okay, plus land acquisition, okay? And again, we don't know what those numbers are going to be. We wouldn't even want to speculate that publicly. But we are talking basically slivers of land on four corners of Terry and Old 41 for land acquisition. And we're looking to try to save money, I'm sorry, sir.
No, go ahead.
We're trying to look to save money on relocation of utilities for the undergrounding.
And the loan, the loan money that we borrowed was around $9 million, right?
13.
13 million.
13 million dollars, 13 million dollars. When we did Imperial Street and Terry, we borrowed 35 million, is that what it was? 35?
36.
36 million dollars.
Right.
That dwarfed our actual budget. But, you know, so, but we're doing pretty good on paying that back right now, right? So I, that's the way I kind of see this. I think this is the same thing. A lot of times, these other things, and you're right, could we go down the budget, let's just put off paving roads for all, let's pay out these things that we do. Anytime you do that, you're going to pay the consequences down the line. It's going to cost you even more down the line, because the road's going to be a little bit worse, things are going to be a little more awry. The quality of your community goes down a little bit, you can't stop watering plants. The county at one time had the solution of, hey, let's just not turn the lights on on the roads, we'll save some money that way. You can't do things like that in your community. Your community suffers for that. We have to keep doing business. We'll pay back the loan. The loan's not going to be bad to pay back. And I understand that on paper, people are going to beat you up on it, but just, hey, we borrowed money on the loan, that's why that's there. But every year, this year, what are we going to pay in debt service on that loan? It's not going to be, it's not going to be $13 million, is it?
Yeah, no, no.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you caught me off guard there.
Okay, it's not going to be much at all compared to $13 million. That, if we did our books the way we do our books, that's what we would show, is that that's what we were going to owe this particular year, so I don't know.
And since you gave me a little bit of time, I can answer your question.
No, we didn't.
This fiscal year, about a million dollars.
Yeah. So anyway, so that's it. And I guess it's a matter of philosophical thing. If you don't like the fact that we borrow money, the real solution to it, don't borrow money. Don't borrow money, work out of pocket. But we did borrow money. But we, I don't think, because we borrowed some money so that we could do something that we thought was really important, which is Old 41 in that area down there, we knew what we were getting into. I don't think we can stop doing day-to-day business, which is what we do. Patch potholes, fix our stuff for our young people to use, build our swimming pools like we're doing. I don't think we should do that. I understand the sentiment.
But also to add some plus to it, when we originally borrowed the 36 million, we refinanced that debt, what was remaining. And we are saving $300,000 a year over 10 years, which will be $3 million, just by changing the interest rate by a couple percentage points. And then there was one other one, when we did the deal with the county, we got the 13 at 2.96. Now, in my world, in the financial world, if you can borrow money at those kind of rates, I think we all should be doing it, and we can pay off the credit card debt, or 18% or 20%. But there's some positive things that have happened the last couple of years with the help of everybody on this board to accomplish things that public government has to do, and I'm very pleased with that. And now because of this major project downtown, I've been here for 22 years, and it's, to see this, something happening like this is exciting. I even had a chance to, talking about money, just this is a little off, this is way off the subject, but I had some person that told me about our dog park, and they wanted to know when we're going to build the swimming pool for the dogs. They actually asked me that, and I said, "Well, I think I'll check with Janet."
Ant's got it on the plane.
She didn't hear me.
Oh, boy.
Janet didn't hear me.
Janet, please let that be an experiment.
I heard.
I won't be here.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
But anyway, anyway, Pete asked a question about, is anybody else worried about that?
No, I would tell you that we've been through some of the worst municipal times that we could have been through. I'm proud of what our staff's been able to do to make sure that we kept a budget. It's time to spend a little bit of money. And in this downtown project, if you talk about the global picture, the big picture, Peter, that's the big picture. We need to be able to do these sorts of things to make this the quality of city we want it to be in 20 years. So, yeah, we're, it's, a lot of it is paper. I mean, it's a matter of accounting principles, but we're there. We need to keep going. We can't stop now and take a step back.
Yeah, I want to, I agree with moving forward. It's a work in progress, and so is our fitness center expansion. That has to take place, because there's waiting time, big time.
Yes.
But at the same time, at the same time, we do need to get, we do need to think out the box for the future. Pete's right about this, and I've listened to a couple people from YMCA. We do need to think out of the box here in the future, as we're, in our operational, our day-to-day business, the way we do that. There is opportunity there for our citizens' benefit, not for the YMCA's benefit, not for our benefit, but for the citizens' benefit. There's no reason why we can't, we shouldn't be able to figure out a way that we could have a reciprocal relationship. And then these things, these things will fix themselves, because we'll figure out what we want to do and what we each have to offer at the table. It'll be, I think that that's for certain, so. Anyway, there you have it. Anybody have anything else they'd like to talk about, anything else on the budget? Okay, and at this time, Audrey, we have work to do.
Are you ready for the resolutions?
Could you stand by for just a minute? Mr. Mayor, I just want to be clear here that right now, we've not seen any changes tonight in the budget. We're going to proceed as presented.
You saw what I saw.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and at this time, do you want a motion, or you want to tell us what it is, and then we can take care of that?
Andy, want to start, or you want me to?
Go ahead.
If I could just get clarification, so the $60,000?
Yes, I'm sorry, that is a change. $60,000 for the.
Skate park.
Repair to the skate park.
In that case, we would like to ask if we could take a break in the meeting to update the resolution, so that the resolution.
So you can get your math right?
We'd like to add that $60,000 as an expenditure, if that's because you did vote on that.
Absolutely.
And we will need a funding source for that. That would be a general fund expenditure. And I'm not aware of any available revenue streams to fund it, other than fund balance.
I might recommend, just so the councils are aware, you've got about 34, no, 43? And what is it, what have you got left in contingency?
$36,400.
So if we took that 36 from contingency with council approval, of course, and the balance from fund balance, then we might be okay, right? And the 175 is something we need to add to the budget, right?
It's already in the budget.
Okay, but that's a CDBG.
Right.
All right, gotcha.
There's one, one thing I would like to bring up. I wasn't here at the last council meeting, so I couldn't bring it up then. But at the previous council meeting, I kind of did make a hasty change in my decision on how I was going to vote. You know, I was looking forward to a nicely landscaped buffer on East Terry. And then when I found out that it was going to be about the same price as the wall, I was hoping that the landscaping was going to be much cheaper. You know, it kind of made me lean more towards the wall, and also I didn't want to lose the right-of-way for the road, for future sidewalks and everything. That night, I was only thinking A and B. I didn't think, you know, there's a third option of not doing anything. And, you know, after looking at that project, I know other sections got walls because the road was widened. That section hasn't been widened yet. So, I mean, is that something that really needs to be done now, or are we setting a bad precedence? You know, because really, driving around, I could see other places that could come up and say, hey, we would like a wall here, or even a landscaped buffer.
If I, if I might, Mr. Mayor, just briefly, so a few years ago, the staff presented a certain protocol by which the requests for walls and for maintenance of ponds and those kinds of things went through this process. And there are certain criteria that have to be met, and evaluations that are done by staff and then brought to council, indicating whether or not it met the criteria. Well, first off, this particular request did meet the criteria set by that protocol. I did ask, because I was concerned about how many other walls could go up in the city. I did ask Matt to take a look at that, Matt Feeney, our public works director, for the record. And he indicated that based upon the protocol criteria we have in place right now, he cannot find one other location in the city that would allow for this type of wall to be established. So I think this is kind of a one-time request for this particular location. I do not think it increases the exposure of the city to additional requests that would meet the protocol, if that helps council.
What was the criteria that allowed this to meet the, getting the.
Here comes John, because John wrote it.
Protocol.
John wrote the protocol.
No, actually, John Gutierrez, for the record, I don't have the protocol with me, but I can tell you that it's a combination of both objective and subjective standards that we put in. For example, you might look at whether or not the condition that the residents are concerned about reflects a change in what had been the conditions before, as opposed to just their reaction to an existing situation. That might be an objective standard, but then within that objective standard, the criteria, the folks that are looking at the criteria also weigh in the extent of the change. So that's where the subjective nature of it comes in. What we do is, we take about six of those different types of questions that we run it through, and if it meets the thresholds, you keep going down the list. through, and if it meets the thresholds, you keep going down the list. It's reviewed by staff, usually spread out over three different departments horizontally, so we're getting three different independent looks at it, and unless it meets a basic number, in this case, I think, out of a scoring of 100, it had, hit a 75, unless it does that, it doesn't come to, to council. As Carl indicated, we did put this one, this request through that protocol, criteria examination, it did meet the threshold, we brought it to you, and at that point, is when we were directed not to proceed at that point, but to proceed looking at the other options. We then weighed in the vegetative buffer, as opposed to wall, and as I think was already mentioned, our concern was that vegetation, A, would not be any cheaper a solution, and would also take up much more of the workable right-of-way that we had. Our concern was that finished product there may not be any better than what is existing there now, 'cause there is some vegetation there, it would take up the existing right-of-way, which would then eliminate council's ability to do other things in the future. For that reason, again, we defaulted back to the wall, which is what the residents had asked for in the beginning. So, that's a little bit of a background on it. I, I can, again, copy you with the different protocols that we have, not only for buffering, drainage maintenance, pond maintenance, and I'll, I'll get that to you if you like.
As a, as a, as a parallel, I'll give you some time to think about, concentrate that for a little bit. You worked on the CDBG funds, right?
Yes.
There's a number in here that says 325, and it just says CDBG funds, whatever. Have you identified those projects yet within that fund balance?
Yes.
All of them?
Actually, I think we're projected with the carryover dollars, I think we're projected to spend over $750,000 in CDBG funds in this upcoming year, and that's spread out between a sidewalk project, playground projects, that Nicole's already referenced, so, yes. And those, like the situation we're talking about on the wall, there are certain criteria that has to be met before we know that they're eligible for use.
Well, and, and what I was referencing, too, is the $60,000 were short on the playground, I didn't know if there were funds within that fund balance that could be used on that, or if they're already-
Probably not, only because it's usually not eligible for maintenance-type issues, and this probably would be considered a maintenance issue.
Even if they're a replacement?
Hmm, pretty sure.
Okay.
Well, I'd say, you know, contact our, our colleagues up at the county about that. Now, understand, though, if I understood what, what Nicole was saying correctly, is that we can't promise it at this point, but there may be some savings on the playground side, because we're putting the playground in the shaded area, it may not be the $175,000 project there, so there may be some offset on the $60,000.
Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Well, and on, when the staff decided that it, it could go forward, that was a three-person panel?
Yeah.
I believe it was two to one on sending forward.
Exactly.
You know, it's one vote shy of being turned down, so.
Yep.
I don't know, I was just thinking, you know, we should probably take another look at it.
Obviously, that's up to council.
Well, let's, let's poll council and, and see if council is still desirous of doing that, invite some more people to the party. Bill, what are you thinking?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking is this, having been by there, all of us been back at, by that, all those, are, are all those trees that are there now, that, are, are they on the easement, or are they part of the, beyond those wonderful fences that those people have? I think I asked you that before.
Yes, sir.
Try me again.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name's Matt Feeney, Public Works Director, for the record. Sir, without an accurate survey, it's 50/50 on those trees. Some of them are caused, yeah. A lot of them do lie within the, right on the right-of-way line, some of them are gonna be private trees as well, so, as we would go forward, if we were to go forward with either project, of course, we would have to survey the right-of-way, and then lay in whatever boundary you should choose along that right-of-way line.
And the people would be responsible for anything behind the wall, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, which makes sense. So, we won't have any trees, it sounds like we're not gonna have any. Reminds me of Eastbrook-Westbrook, when we had, the county was gonna do the road there. We went to a seminar, Carl and I were there, and I think maybe, maybe many other people were there, too, and they said they weren't gonna take the oak trees out, or whatever it was, and they took the whole doggone thing out, and we, we wound up asking them to build a wall for them because of what had happened with the county. I just don't wanna see something happen like that.
What we, we, obviously, we don't like to, to kill trees for, for no apparent reason. A lot of those trees, though, along that, that right-of-way are nuisance vegetation, trees that are, are code, actually precludes, Brazilian pepper, for example, so although they do provide screening, they are trees that we don't typically encourage to grow here in our environment. The closest example I can give you with our experience is with the, the recent wall we did on Shangri-La. We did try to save some trees for folks, but yes, it is a, you know, the shortest point between two points is a line, straightest point, and some trees unfortunately do fall by the wayside, but without an accurate right-of-way survey, it's, it's too premature to tell you which and what exact trees would go, but certainly, a lot of what you see there would be removed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else wanna just chime in? Go ahead, Pete, on the, on the wall.
I was gonna say, on, in regards to the wall, you know, I voted against it previously, and if it came up for a vote, I'd vote against it again. I just think it sets a bad precedent for, you know, citywide, oh, we want, you know, we want, we want a wall, we, you know, I just think it's opening us up Pandora's Box around the city, so, I stand with that, and I'd, I'd love to bring it up for another vote, Mike, if you wanna make a motion.
Let's, uh, let's get everybody's words on the subject here. Janet?
Well, I've got a big word on it, I'm really disappointed in my fellow council members, because we did vote on it, and we went home and called those people and told them they're getting a wall, and I think it's really crappy to have to now tell these folks that it's not gonna happen, because there's a possibility of a change of heart. I think that's not what we're about. These folks have wanted this wall, wall. They did want, want vegetation, they have asked for a wall since the other walls that went up along Terry, and when that happened, they really thought they were gonna be included in that project, and they were so disillusioned that they weren't at that time. So, you're, you're, it's kinda funny, it's like you're talking out of two sides of your mouth. You want the YMCA included in everything we do, right? That's what I'm hearing tonight. Well, that is the worst sidewalk in Benita Springs right there, for people to try to ride their bikes or walk to the Y. It's horrible. And putting in the wall allows the right-of-way, so that next year, hopefully, this will be in the budget, that we will be making a sidewalk that's not six inches from the edge of the pavement, that it'll be in where people will feel safe to be able to walk and ride their bikes to the Y. That's what a major part of that wall will allow to have happen. Vegetation looks great, you know, I'm a tree hugger, I would love vegetation. Vegetation's gonna take up the space, so to get that safety factor of having a sidewalk that people can use, we need the wall to go in. It's, it's as simple as that, but I, but I can't get beyond the fact that we wanna bring this up again, and we're gonna go and tell these people that possibly, tonight, it fails, and they don't get it after all this time, is, I, I, it's beyond me. It's just beyond me, I'm, I'm disappointed, really.
I've, I gotta, I agree with Janet, it was, I think it's a, it's predominantly a case, whether you agree with the situation or not, once you make a decision to do something for people, and it's like, oh, okay, that's the side, we don't have to show up, and then all of a sudden, in a meeting, not on the agenda, not on anything, it's like, well, let's not do that.
I would've had this room filled tonight with people if I knew that this was gonna happen, and they would all be standing here saying to you, thank you, thank you, we finally get our wall.
Yeah, it's, if you're gonna do something, I think you need to do a wall, there's just, there's just not enough room to do that, and I think we've, we've, we've made the indication that we would do it, the money's there, I think we should probably do it.
Thank you.
And I don't know how anybody else feels, or if you wanna make, anybody wants to make a motion, or whatever you like to do. Council, what's your pleasure? How would, how would you like to proceed?
I think we've already voted on this, and I don't wanna have to revisit every issue every time, and somebody changes their mind, so I'm sticking with my vote.
All right. Council, you all settled?
Good.
You, we okay?
Yeah, I mean, mainly, what, what I wanted to say was, I, I kinda didn't agree with either the wall or the landscaping, and that's, had I thought about it more, that's how I would've voted that night.
Well, and Mike, and, and you know what? I, I had the same trepidation you did when it came up the first time. I'm like, mainly because I don't know what the future holds for that particular quarter, that's gonna change. It's, it has to change someday, but given the two different decisions, the two different options at the time, it sounded like we, the council was gonna do something there, so, I think the wall, the better of the two options, is the better of the two options in this particular case, and I, I think we'll be okay, and I think Janet's right, I think that, right on the heels of this, I think you'll see other improvements along that road there, because it'll be begging for that. It'll be begging for that, road will be begging for that within the next couple of years, because that, that will be a busy road with everything that's going on out that way, so, anyway. But if council wants to, you know, bring the question up at some point in time, that's fine with me, but I have to stick here with the fulfilling our promise. We did the same, go ahead, I'm gonna bring Imperial Street, we did the same thing Imperial Street. We're not gonna put any commercial there, we're not gonna put any, let's see, we're gonna put landscaping there, we're gonna put two walls up, we made a bunch of promises there, we kept those promises. Or they would've beat the heck out of us if we were lucky, so, anyway.
I just have one more question.
Yes, go ahead.
It's a different topic, is that all right, Mr. Mayor?
That would be great.
The, we've been talking about safety, public safety, and at the, at the last meeting, I asked about elec, bringing electrical into River Park, and I assumed it'd been rolled into something, I didn't see a separate line item, but Ann tells me we have not done, and I'll put that into the budget? That's correct?
We, we were asked to investigate it, that's what we've done, and I think Nicole has an answer to that.
Yes, we do have a number, I did email it to Ann, it's $10,000 to bring electric